Welcome, welcome everybody to this district forum for the South Bend Common Council candidates for Districts 4 and 5. We are going to start this evening with opening statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to tell you a little bit about themselves and why they are running for election or reelection. And then we will go into our Q&amp;A period. If you have a question and you need a note card, you can just raise your hand in the air and one of our volunteers will get you a note card. And they will also run those up to me. So raise your card in the air if you have a question and we can accept those throughout the forum. I'm Elizabeth Benham. I'm the campus director of the American Democracy Project here at IU South Bend and Director of Voter Services and Education for the League of Women Voters of the South Bend area. And those are the groups that are sponsoring this forum this evening. We have been busy at work sponsoring forums in Mishawaka and South Bend for the mayoral candidates and the council candidates, and also out in Elkhart where they have a competitive mayoral race, and also of course similar races for districts and at-large candidates for the common council. The forum then will be to rotate the order of first response so that we don't hear always from the same person. And the length of the responses will vary based on the complexity or specificity of the question, though one certainly could quibble with the fact that I may give them 90 seconds for even a topic that could, we could spend 90 minutes discussing and debating. But to get to as many questions and topics as possible, we'll move along with question responses ranging from anywhere in the range of 30 seconds to 90 seconds. I will have the option to extend debate on an issue that seems important. And then if a candidate is mentioned specifically by another candidate by name or obvious reference, they will have a 30-second rebuttal opportunity. I did want to draw your attention to two other events that are coming up. First, on the 15th of October, there will be an at-large candidate forum here, and those will be South Bend Common Council candidates who are running at-large. There are five candidates who will, are seeking three spots. So we hope to see you back here for that, right in this room, 1001 Wythe Camp Hall at IU South Bend, where we'll hear from those candidates. We also have a new event on the calendar, which is an October 29th forum for the six district candidates. That is Democrat Sheila Lyszkowski and official writing candidate Eli Cantu. And that will take place at the Civil Rights Heritage Center on West Washington Street on October 29th. We will start then, without further ado, with candidate opening statements. And we'll hear first from District 4 candidates, beginning with Democrat Tyler Gilliam.
Thank you. This is tonight, of course, is my family. I thank you all for coming and thank you everybody else for coming too. I'm Tyler Gilliam. As Elizabeth said, I'm running for 4th District of the Common Council. I think the city's at a crossroads. Finally, crime is up, our roads are crumbling, basic services are breaking down, and our police is in retreat. This is a critical time for the city. We can vote to continue down the slippery slope of the path that we chose, or we can begin a different route, a new year filled of reform and growth. To rattle the rust off of our frozen city, we need old ideas, not all ideas. I'm the proud son of a union plumber, a housekeeper, and the brother of a cancer spreader. My family's foundation is set in hard work, more than brutal honesty, and a burning desire to make things better than what we perceive them. I would bring all these attributes to council. Good stuff. I would bring all these attributes to council, and if you should bless me to be your servant in the 4th District when you elect me November 5th, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we hear from Democrat Troy Warner.
My name is Troy Warner. I'm running for the 4th District, senior South Bend. I'm a Democrat. South Bend is my home. I was born here, raised here, grew up here. It's a city that I love. I love its residents, and I want to serve my community. I've been married to my beautiful wife Erin for 21 years. We have two daughters that went through South Bend schools, one in college, one on the way to college. I want to take just a second and do something I have not done so far, and I want to thank my wife and commend her for everything. This has been so far a year of our campaign going through. We worked together as a team, and we were able to do it as a team, and I could do nothing but help. During my career, I raised a family while working full-time and going to school. I obtained three degrees going to night school and working full-time. I've held many roles and worn many hats in the community. I've been a ditch digger. I've helped build buildings in our community. And then finally, I became an attorney and worked as a public defender for both juvenile and adult clients. I worked to help people out of jail and off the streets, and now I currently serve as the attorney for the sheriff and the county police. I'm running for this office because I want to serve you, I want to be your problem solver. And so please vote for me, Troy Warner, on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we move to the 5th District candidates, starting with Democrat Sandy Combs.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evenings, everyone. I'm Sandy Combs. I'm the Democrat nominee for 5th District Common Council. I have lived in the district for 43 years, so I know a little bit about the district. I'm, and since Troy already set the bar, I must acknowledge my wife of many, many, many years, my wife Sheila, who has been my right-hand through all of this and through everything in life. And I am a, I'm a management accountant. I've worked with, for large corporations and I've worked for small. I am, I'm a, right now, I am a self-employed business owner. I own a accounting and tax preparation business. I received my MBA from Indiana University right here. It doesn't look the same anymore, but, and I'm in the race because I have a strong accounting and finance background. And I bring that to the table, and basically I'm saying that for those of us who are involved in spending taxpayer dollars, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to be fiscally responsible, to make sure that dollars are being properly spent. And I'm also looking at the process of how we set the city budget. And if you give me the opportunity, I'd like to be able to serve the 5th District and South Bend as councilman.
Thank you. And now, would you go ahead? And now we hear from Republican incumbent Jake Tashka.
Thank you. Professor Benham, the American Democracy Project of LEED, for putting us on and all of you for coming tonight. As Professor Benham stated, I am the incumbent in the 5th District. I was selected in this role by a caucus of precinct committee people after Dr. Babe Warner, who previously held a seat, retired mid-term. And shortly after being sworn in in June of 2018, the city released the results of a community-wide survey. And the results of that survey were unsurprising to most of us. Public safety was top of that list on citizen concerns, and that was closely followed by roads and infrastructure in second. And a year and a half later, as I'm out talking to folks on their doorsteps, those two issues continue to be top priority and they continue to dominate the discussion. And folks feel like we haven't made a ton of progress in fixing roads. In fact, in that year and a half spent, or year and a half span, the city has continued to underfunds roads. We have seen a sharp rise in violent crime. We're on pace to double, if not triple, shooting victims over last year. As councilman, I have not wavered in my fight for increased road funding. I have not given up getting our police officers the reinforcements that they so desperately need. And I have remained transparent and accessible to the residents of the South Side. A vote for me on November 5th is a vote to finally ensure that our city government's priorities match those of our citizens.
Thank you very much. We will move to the first question. It will go first to the District 4 candidates, and I hope you'll have 90 seconds. The question says this, "I know that many issues encompass the entire city. Nevertheless, what two issues facing your district do you see as the most pressing? And what steps do you plan to take to address these problems?" And we'll hear first from Troy Warner.
I think of the two major issues that I hear most commonly at the doors are infrastructure and public safety or crime. Right. If elected, I will prioritize infrastructure spending. The city has to take proactive steps to get a hold of deterioration before deterioration sets in. This includes sewers, stormwater systems, curbs, lighting, and not just streets and potholes, but you know, many areas of the 4th, particularly in the North Shore Triangle down along Angelo, been dealing with flooding in some of the areas up along the South End and Miller Day, and they're also doing the new development. I think the second issue is crime. And I think with crime, right, we can add more police officers, but really you have to be proactive about crime. We've been policing the same way for 100 years. You continue to just add more police officers, you'll have the same result that you've had for the past 100 years. So you have to go out and, these are kids, you have to provide support services to the folks that are committing the crime. You have to provide opportunities to get jobs, and not just the opportunity to get a job, but then you have to ensure that they succeed. So if you get some young man a job, you have to make sure that he can get to the job. I think we have to stop crime before the bullet is shot, before the drug is sold. If we continue to go after crime after the bullet is shot, we're going to have the same results that we've had.
Thank you. Tyler Gilliam.
I mean, even from my own personal experience, I mean, there was a, there was a six-night span where there was four shootings, twice when I was outside, and it was less than a block and a half away. I mean, that, that changes things. I mean, that puts your life in perspective. I have people over at my house all the time, but I mean, it's not just me. The street north would be Madison Street, Cedar Street. Been one of the most violent summers that they've seen on record. And this is all throughout the 4th District, crime is right. Whether it's Edison Park, where they have record break-ins and burglaries, you had just 100 shots, or actually 100 phone calls to Madison Street alone. And this is all throughout, because people being robbed and, and that's based off of a lack of opportunities, yes, of course, I don't have to agree with Troy on that one. But where we would disagree is where, I think we do need to have officers. I've sat in with the meeting of the police, where I've heard Chief Lyszkowski from his own lips say that we need at least 20 officers. When Maryland Northwest, everyone with Joe Rogan who's in the back, the current holder of this seat, there was a lot of people that said, "I want," or "I need, I would love to have a beat." It was great when the police officers were able to walk our streets. Chief Lyszkowski basically was saying, without saying, "We don't have enough guys to do that. I would love to be able to do that, but we just simply don't have it. Our recruitment is down." You had 12 officers use this June, you had about 15 shot acts this June, and you have 64 of 210 that are eligible up for retirement, that could retire tomorrow if they'd like. I mean, we are not in a very good spot. I think we have to prioritize our public safety first because we're not going to get these jobs, we're not going to get these businesses in unless we can establish a safe environment for these businesses to take root. And I fully am embracing that we can add more with active community police. But at the same time, I think that we can't get any of that unless we can actually beef up our police numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Warner, you have 30 seconds.
Oh, thank you. I do have one. I don't disagree that we need more police officers. I agree that we need more police officers. But the problem is filling spots right now. They have lots of empty spots that we can't fill. So it's going to take more than just adding more money to the police officers and providing more support. I think it really needs to be a societal change to decrease poverty and decrease opportunity for growth.
Thank you. We turn now to the District 5 candidates. The same question for you. What are the most pressing issues in your district and how do you plan to address them? And we will hear first from Sandy, first from Jake Tashka.
Thank you. So I'd like to speak on, I guess, one of the issues that the 4th District candidates spoke. Could speak on both, but I think we're going to get to some of that later. Two of the most pressing issues in my mind addressing the, fronting the 5th are infrastructure for sure. We've got roads that are crumbling in the 5th District. We've got drainage issues. We've got a lot of flooding issues. It is a consistent call that I get from residents, whether it be about pothole or sewage backing up into their basement. I've got a resident along Miami who the drainage just is not done right, and so his yard floods every time we get a heavy rain. And so we need to start addressing some of those issues. Now that leads into some of the second issue that I believe is facing the 5th, and that is that somewhere along the line, whether the chicken came first or the egg, I don't know, but whether the folks on the South Side turn their backs on downtown, or downtown turn their backs on the South Side, there has been a disconnect between South Siders and downtown. And we need to get South Siders re-engaged with their city government. That has been a focus of mine, and over the last year and a half, where there had been no neighborhood organizations before, we've been able to get two successfully off the ground. And I am determined to continue that and to get South Siders engaged in their city government so that they may get the services that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
And all of these are, all of them, we all recognize that there, those are some of the challenges that we have. And in the 5th District, I think probably the most I hear is infrastructure. And actually, what I think what we have to take a look at is that we're, we need to set some priorities. There are, there are still areas within the 5th District that have those curves and sidewalks. Everybody complains about the number of potholes that there are in the streets. We've actually got to set some priorities. We've got to take a look at what is a better way of doing things? What type of materials that we are using in repairing our streets? And so I propose that, you know, that basically that the, that we really take a look to see if there are some alternatives to the types of materials that we are using in our streets. I agree also with neighborhoods, that there has to be, there has to be some emphasis placed on building up our neighborhood associations. As a matter of fact, good neighborhood associations that basically, that makes, that makes, you know, good neighbors make a good, and good neighborhood associations make a good city, make a good district, make a good city. I have recently been involved with some neighborhood associations trying to get some revitalized. Years ago, you had some good neighborhood associations in the 5th District. You had, you know, you had the Scottsdale District, and you had the Kensington Barnes District. And those now need to be revitalized, and so we're working toward that.
Thank you. Thank you. And you all are doing well, and I'd like you to finish your last sentence once that time card goes up right in the back row. Amanda, make sure they see where you are. And we will now go to the next question related, so I'll give you 60 seconds. And we will start again with District 4. I'm hearing first from Tyler Gilliam. This card says, "Does the city council have anything to do with fixing potholes? It took forever in the southwest part of South Bend to get this fixed, and we didn't have a bad winter. So what relief, if any, can the council provide to people?"
To answer the question, yes. I mean, we have control of the budget, which of course is going to be roads and streets and such, which I think we all seem to be in consensus that we do want to go ahead and make infrastructure one of our main topics. What can we do? I think we have to come up with different solutions. I know that we've kind of gone down a technocrat style of leadership here in the city where it's big data, where we want things in real time so that you respond to them. Is there some kind of app or something we can develop? And a driver, a motorist going over a pothole on, say, what's on the South Side? I said South, Ewing Street, could be like, hey, make, almost like the ways after you just drop it, say, right here, we have a massive problem here, and the kid could like it, and it could be sent over to maybe a 311 or something like that that we already have existing. So I mean, I think we've got to get creative with these different ways. I also like Sandy's idea where we have to come up with better solutions, I think, before we even get to that pothole stage, before we get to deterioration. Are we using the best, most quality asphalt before we pour it, or are we getting cheapest, most hard price we can find? Because we get what we pay for, and I think that's pretty good.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Thank you. As, you know, the city council holds the purse strings, right? So they can increase financing towards more streets. Unfortunately, with current technology, as long as we have the weather we have, we're going to have potholes. There is 311. I've had people that I've encouraged to call 311 to report potholes. And I do agree with kind of what's been said that about evaluation of the materials used and the technology. There are some new materials and some new ways to do streets to reduce the number of potholes and increase the lifespan of the street should be evaluated.
Thank you. Back to District 5. Any other suggestions? Mr. Combs.
Well, I guess I kind of brought this up, started this, but you know, and I'll just reiterate again, that we do have to, you know, reevaluate what we're doing. We have to take a look at how we are actually spending taxpayer dollars. Are we getting the best product or the book? And, you know, and are we doing, are we really doing what we need to be doing, what we should be doing? Are we keeping our roads in good repair? And we have to take a look at how many roads are being repaired each year and how long it would take us to get all of the streets repaired.
Mr. Tashka, during the mayoral candidate forum last spring, I believe someone used the figure of 70 years to repair all those roads. Can the council do anything, given the money that's actually available?
Sure. So I think to your question, first of all, it depends on who you talk to, on the figure that's thrown out. Mayor Pete in the state of the city address used roughly around 2,000 and a half miles that we're responsible for as a city. And we are typically paving between 30 and 40 a year, which would put us on close to 100 to 100 track, as you said. Now, there's been some revision of that in the past, I'd say, six months or so, and that 1,200 of those are dry in lane miles, right? So we're not going to count the, maybe the middle lane, the turn lane. Whatever you might say about it, we're not doing enough. And again, the administration has admitted as such. And so certainly we need to do a better job in prioritizing budgeting. If we are truly prioritizing our budget and budgeting towards what our citizens want, then we will begin to put more money towards roads and infrastructure. And so far, we haven't seen that. I fought hard this year, and the only thing I've been able to do is extra $400,000, and that'll only get us an extra four lane miles.
Thank you very much. Then before the next question, we will go first to District 5, and we'll actually hear from you again, Mr. Tashka. And it says, "Can you tell us specific things you would do to decrease gun violence and gang violence in your district's citywide?"
Yes, absolutely. I think the number one thing we can do, and I recognize that there are some logistical, some recruiting and training challenges set before us, but we need to beef back up our police department. We cannot do any of these things, any of these preventative measures until we have enough officers on the street to where they're not bouncing from call to call, to where they have the time to do the more proactive police work that they all want to do. So we need to find whether it's incentivizing talent transfers, finding ways to more effectively recruit within the city, but we need to find a way to beef this department back up. We need to bring back our traffic unit and our drug unit. Those specified units would stumble on some of the illegal guns that are being used and some of the shootings in our city. And so we need those extra feet on the street. We also need them to be patrolling in the neighborhoods and doing foot patrols, connecting with the community, building those bridges so that they can hear about a rift before it spills out into the streets.
Thank you very much. And next, we will hear from Sandy Combs.
Okay, when it comes to the, you know, gun violence and our youth, I think one of the things that we need to also take a look at is, when I look at the 5th District, I said, "Where are the neighborhood youth centers?" We need to do some things that give, that give our young people some options, some things to do other than to become gang bankers and to, and then we need to take a look at how are they getting access to the guns? And yes, we do need to increase resources to the, to the police so that they can be able to monitor this and to do a, do a better job with this. But I still think we've got to do something about educating our youth and also to, and to give them something to do.
Thank you. And back to the 4th District, Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I think, I agree with Jake. We need to increase recruitment. That needs to be a community effort. That's the only way we're going to get officers back, is the community gets involved. Also, there's a, a temporary fix might be, there are 13 officers that are county-wide specialty units. A temporary fix may be pulling those 13 officers out of those county-wide units and putting them back in the city on a beat in the city temporarily, and tell the, the force can be bolstered up in number of officers. I also think the group violence intervention program, I've had clients go through that program, it's a great program, and the new Peacemaker Fellowship grants that are coming along are good starts to get some community organizations out into the neighborhoods, talking to folks, putting them together, linking them with public services, getting them addiction trained, getting them job trained, and trying to stop the violence before the guns even reach their hand.
Thank you. And Tyler Gilliam.
I only get 60 seconds? All right. Well, I mean, we're all in consensus. We need to beef up the police department. This is something that wasn't really talked about in spring until we saw probably one of the most violent numbers that we've had on record. I mean, it's probably been about two, three decades since we had some of this. We're 39th in pay. How are we going to recruit people when in the state of Indiana, South Bend is ranked 39th in pay for the 4th largest city? We're not going to get people where the 4th largest city, with 4th largest city problems are paying around the lines of, you know, you paid somewhere in Kokomo. So these are unsustainable to bring officers here. It's not attractive. I know a wife probably wouldn't want her husband to take a pay cut to come to South Bend to deal with the issues that we have. We need to go ahead and beef back up, we need to bring back our DARE program. That was very valuable in school. I remember the DARE program vividly where it showed us the problems that would come with trucks, and it scared me away from Chinese things. We don't have that anymore. The drug unit is gone, the traffic unit is gone. I mean, like I said, I got time right here, but I mean, I can go on and on and on about this all day long, but we have to attack crime at a true. And the root is, is that it's a poverty issue. Forty percent of the city was in poverty.
Thank you very much. So let us then go to a question about poverty. Poverty in South Bend is above the national out, national average. Is it a big problem in your district? And what specific steps can the council take to address this problem? And we will hear first from Sandy Combs of District 5.
The issue of poverty, actually, one of the, there's, there is some poverty in probably all the districts of South Bend, including the 5th District. And poverty can be, that can be best addressed by bringing in jobs, more jobs, new jobs, the creation of jobs within, within South Bend. And in order to do that, we've got to take, there's some other underlying factors that also affected in that. You know, with the, along with the, with the jobs, we've got to also make sure that we've got, that we've got a living wage as a minimum wage, and that we have jobs that pay at least prevailing wage, wages. That when you, when you put people to work and they've got jobs, that is the first attack toward poverty.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka.
So economic opportunity is absolutely, right? We need to find ways to increase an environment where folks want to come and do business here. And I think it's a, it's a double-edged thing, though, because we can have a lot of jobs, and we're seeing some jobs grow in the city now. Some of those jobs are being filled from outside of the city, from Mishawaka, from Southwest Michigan, from even Grange or New Prairie. So what we also need to do is find a way to work hand-in-hand with the schools to give the children the tools that they need to attain one of those jobs. And so what we've done so far as And so what we've done so far as the city is kind of operate in two different silos, the school, there's the school corporation over here and the city over there. Our aims really need to be aligned, and we need to do what we can to help the school corporation, help these, these kids get vocationally trained, technically trained, present them with other options besides a four-year university.
Thank you. And now we hear from Troy Warner.
I agree. I think we need to partner with the schools. One of the things that has never happened is the school board and the city council have never sat down and had a joint meeting. I think one of my goals within the first quarter of being elected is to have a joint meeting between the school board and the full city council and have those two entities sit down and kind of cooperate together. They need to increase opportunities for skilled trades programs. There needs to be a pipeline from the schools right into the trades. I went through a unionized full apprenticeship, you know. We need to teach our kids that there's value in doing this and not just doing this. I think another thing we need to do to address poverty is to increase affordable housing. Much of the housing in South Bend, the quality for what you get on the $1,000 end is pretty poor. I think some of the code changes have allowed for increased development of multifamily properties, which will lower the property price. I think we need to explore other alternatives to also do that.
Thank you. Mr. Gillian.
I think wherever poverty exists, it's a big problem, whether it's prevalent in the districts or not. If it's there, it's a problem and it needs to be attacked. You know, businesses, as Jake alluded to, aren't going to move here unless we have a business-friendly environment at this point. And it starts with our workforce. Are we developing the right workforce for us to be able to survive in the 21st century? I mean, in reality here, you know, we need to have alternatives for college. A lot of people are kind of facing colleges, this massive investment, that you can walk out with $60,000, $70,000, $100,000, and I mean, really what's going to be the return on investment? There has to be alternatives that are set in our high schools and our grade schools, even possible at middle schools, where kids can have that option of going down that trade school route. It's a very lucrative business, incredibly, especially when the average age is about 54 years old in the union here in South Bend. So I think that once we have that big retirement, I mean, it's coming up in the next 10 years, we're not going to have skilled tradesmen be able to do work. So there's going to be a need, and I think we have to address that right away. And I think that the school board and the city council have to have a working relationship, because right now, the left hand is on the right stool.
Thank you. Another 60 seconds on this clock. This will go first to you, Tyler Gillian. Would you have voted to overturn the mayor's veto of a zoning variance to allow the Women's Care Center to locate itself next to the whole Women's Health Center?
Would I have voted to overrule the...
The mayor's veto?
The mayor's veto. Yes, I would have.
Mr. Warner.
Can we get 60 seconds for that? Is that correct? Yes, I would. So I did the legal analysis on the zoning, and I was unable to find any, any kind of legal support for the notion of denying zoning variance based upon the fact that the institution is an abortion provider or that they're anti-abortion. I think if you vote one way, then you've got to do it the other way. And so I think this was a question from the spring also, and I would have voted yes.
To allow them to co-locate near each other and even introduce a fair shot?
Yes, I would have voted against the mayor's veto.
And now we go to Jake Teshka, District Five.
Yes, I would have voted to overturn the mayor's veto. This happened just before I was sworn in, and it is a zoning issue. And I think it was something that got turned into a, something that got mired in the national politics of the abortion debate. And as a council, we are tasked with looking at these things strictly from a zoning perspective, and there is no reason why those two facilities could not be located next to each other.
Mr. Combs.
I would. Yes, I would have voted against the mayor's veto.
All right. Let us go then to the next question. This one will go first to you, Mr. Combs. Concerning city contracts, will you seek to guarantee that work goes to local vendors who hire local, unionized labor? If not, why not? If so, how will you put your plans into action?
Okay, yes, I would vote in favor that the contracts be, go to those that are, live within the city. And basically, that I would look at that there, that we should do that because we should be able to, in other words, I should be able to earn my money here and spend my money here. My money should be able to turn at least once before it leaves and goes out to, to great growth. I think we do that by doing, setting up some, when we, when we open up contracts for bidding, we take a look at, okay, where bidders can have certain credits for doing, for hiring locals, like, and even to give some credits for disadvantaged and minority business enterprises.
Thank you. Mr. Teshka.
So I think there's, there's two parts to that question. One is the local piece of it, and I would say absolutely we should be trying to award contracts to local firms, understanding that there may not be a local firm for what we need at that point in time, right? There are some specialty services that maybe we can't find somebody locally to do that. On the other question of the unions, I would like to say, first of all, I'm the son of a teacher. And so my dad was a teacher his entire life, drove a truck before he retired. But I think that, you know, this, I take a free-market approach to this, and I believe we need to look at who can do the job the best and what city can get the most bang for the buck. And we live in a rent-to-work state, and so we've got to recognize that there may be firms around here that do the job the best and, and may not be unionized. And so I don't think that that should be a second factor.
Thank you. We hear next from the District Four candidates, starting with Troy Warner.
Thank you. Legally, the city can take into consideration the value that is brought by hiring a local contractor, the fact that these workers then to, pay taxes on our community, they get the churches in the community, they shop in our community, they go eat at Peggy's Diner, and the city is legally allowed to take that into consideration with bids. I think the bigger solution is there was a responsible bidder ordinance that was passed two years ago. That needs to be, one of my goals would be to revisit that ordinance within the first quarter and look at putting some teeth behind that. Currently, there's no enforcement mechanism to ensure that the contractors that the city are using are responsive and responsible, that they aren't using 1099, their workers that they're paying, that they're licensed. And I think putting some enforcement mechanism and some teeth in the responsible bidder ordinance would go a long way to ensuring that we have the local contractors and the best contractors possible for our community-owned projects, or supplying goods and services to the city.
So just to clarify, the bidder, the quality of the bidding and all of that would replace a requirement or points specifically for being unionized?
Correct, yes.
All right. We will now move to the next question, and we will start four with District...
Your question's a perfect...
Yeah. First, we will hear from Tyler Gillian.
All right, thank you. Yes, I do think local contracts should be awarded to local contractors. I think if we weren't doing that, at least making local businesses a priority, we'd be failing in our jobs as legislative officials. I don't believe in outsourcing and sending out any more money out of South Bend than we need to. We're doing that with these $267,000 studies that really tell us something that somebody inside the city hall should already know. So there's a way that we can also save one year out of the gauges, I hope there's a question. But I also think that if we can use union labor, I think that would be, that would be fair. Obviously, being the son and grandson of local ones that may be plummeted right here, I would love to see that unions would get contracts, but I'm also, as Jake said, where it makes sense. I mean, I want to make sure that we have the best job at the end of the day. If it's a quality outfit, then yes, I'm all on board, especially if we're going to give out like a tax payment or something. I would love that we had a little bit of negotiation when it came along with it. So yes, I definitely think that local labor, that'd be great, but I also want to make sure that it's quality over anything else.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now to District Five, hearing first from Jake Teshka. This may be obvious in your case, but we'll still ask the question, what are two or three specific skills and experiences you will bring to the job as a member of the council?
Well, I guess you're right. So I'm currently a council person, so I bring that to the job. But I think more than that, my experience prior to being on the council, I've been in both private and public life. I've worked in business, and I've worked in kind of the political and public affairs realm. And so I'd like to think that I understand a lot about how the city interacts with, with business and how we can get the engine of this economy to continue to move forward. And so I should, I bring that. Also bring a tireless work ethic and a commitment to accessibility. And as I stated before, my cell phone number is no secret. You can Google me right now and find it. Many have. And I answer calls from residents whenever I can. And I take a different approach. I think many department heads tell you to call 311. I would say, as your councilperson, if it's important enough for you to call me, whether it's a miss trash pickup or something more serious, I will follow up personally and make sure that they think it's good.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
I think my strength lies in the financial accountability, making sure that dollars are being properly spent and that we're getting our, we're getting value for, for our, the money spent. I'm also in my, I'm not just a, a financial manager, I've also been involved in the community for years, I've worked with a number of, of public organizations. I've also served and passed on the, a citizen member to the Economic Development Committee of the council. And, and I think just the, the whole, I plan on being a full-time council, not a part-time council. So I think that's going to be very important.
Thank you. We go back to District Five, and we hear first from Tyler Gillian.
District Four.
District Four. Could do three, three debates in one week, I guess.
All right. So I really think that what advantages that I bring are two or three of my efforts down here. Well, I mean, we grew up in a house where we had to make ends meet, right? You couldn't just go out to the mall and swipe your credit card and just have a fun old time on mom and dad's dime. I remember, like, if you wanted to go anywhere, you had to, okay, what's the point? You had to ask all these questions and really do a cost-benefit analysis in that moment, whether or not that this was the right decision. That has stuck with me to this very day. That has never left me. Anything that I do now has to be a cost-benefit analysis. I don't believe in throwing money at things. I like to be frugal, but at the same time, I like getting the best thing. But it's hard work. I mean, I've worked in some exhausting industries where it's not performing well. I mean, people were thrown out left and right, but I survived for several years where they, where they didn't. But also, I mean, I have the strength of being able to work with everybody. From my background, we're in college, we're operating with people that are pulling them out of neighborhoods that come from absolute poverty to people that live in outrageous mansions. It doesn't matter, as long as we have those right ideas and that are working, we'll have to get work with everybody.
Thank you. Troy Warner.
Thank you. My skills are problem-solving, right? Even going back to my construction days, I use a lot of those same skills now. Have a blueprint, you have to figure out how to make the blueprint work. I kind of do the same thing now as an attorney. People bring me problems. I have to figure out how do we solve this problem? Also, part of my job is a negotiator. I do that pretty regularly, almost daily. I'm very hardworking. I've got my associate's degree while I was working full-time and raising a family. I went and I got my bachelor's degree going to school at night, and then went on to law school while I was raising a family. I think my legal background would also be invaluable to the council. A lot of what happens with the city council does, they're limited by state and federal law, and, and kind of knowing that and understanding that and being able to do that legal analysis is key. I also think that my experience in criminal law, I've had, I've worked with the incident of the homeless and with, with kids that have committed violent crimes, and kind of have an idea of how to temper that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now start the next question with District Four. And so we will hear first from Mr. Warner, who just finished speaking. And this has to do with the police. The police tape controversy and the recent death of a suspect in a police shooting revealed and perhaps further mistrust between the community and the police. What specific steps would you take to build trust? And do you support a citizen review board for the police?
I think you have to, regarding the citizen review board, you have to be very careful about how you do it. There are very specific state statutes about how you do that citizen review board. I know there was an idea that was positive by one of the mayoral candidates, which violates state law, and you can't do what he was proposing. And I think really, we have to build trust, right? We have to build trust between parts of the community and the police department. I think we need to work to ensure that the police department mirrors a lot of our community in, in how it looks, and we need to, we got to have community involved. We need more police officers. We have to have community involved in recruiting those police officers. We need the churches in the different areas trying to find police officers. They come right out of those neighborhoods that they come from, and we need to put them back into those neighborhoods as police officers. I think those steps would go partially, part of the way of repairing that breach.
Thank you. Tyler Gillian.
Once again, this is one of those questions you really can't condense into 60 seconds, but I'll go ahead and try. I mean, in regards to mistrust of the shooting, I mean, I know that that's been the center of focus for a lot of people this summer, but we're forgetting that 100 other people were shot as well. Eleven people were murdered. I don't think anybody remembers their names. It's just a tragedy. Everybody should be just as supportive as that. Every death is a tragedy. I mean, how do we go about repairing the trust? I think really we have to have open, honest conversations. When I was at a near-northeast neighborhood meeting over here, I ran with Joe, with the chief, and then, yeah, people were about 50% of people in the room were people of color. They didn't look, there wasn't like this tension, this wall that is existing that the national media is trying to push on us, that exists between the two. They both were sitting there at the same table, like, how can we figure this out? I think we have to have that active community place where there's just sort of open dialogue. I know that there's a lot of great organs out there. We went to Peacemakers Program, where they were talking about Richmond, California, where Richmond, California was able to get ex-comics who had actually gone into prison, who then reformed their lives, which is a point in the prison system, and they were able to put them back out on the streets of them, more of these youths, because they've been there, they've done it, they've made these mistakes, and they can catch these kids at an age that maybe they don't necessarily trust the police, but at the same time, they can hear what it's like. If you continue to screw up, this is going to be your sentence.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
Well, I think that one of the ways to address it is, and to build trust, is to go ahead and make it mandatory that, that we use, the policemen use the body cameras, because that, that allows the, that allows the policeman to be able to, also to be able to go into a situation where he may not trust or where he may not be comfortable, but yet he has that body camera, and that gives you, that gives you the facts. That body camera gives you the, the truth of what's going on. So I think that, yes, and then the, the police department needs to mirror the, the community. There should be, we should have a diverse police department, and I think that working, working with organizations such as churches and other community organizations, that that helps us to be able to, to get the, 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 to get the policemen higher, get them on, on board, and it also helps them to, it helps to build the trust when they come from the communities that they represent.
Thank you. Mr. Teshka.
I think healing this divide is going to take personal action from each of us. I think that we all need to be careful with how we use our words. We need to be careful with provocative and inflammatory language. We need to be careful when we lump an entire group and say, all people that are ex, be a police officer, be a people of color, are insert action. I've seen a lot of that, and in this day and age, with that 24-hour news cycle, Facebook, stuff spreads like wildfire. It doesn't help it, further divides us. I'd like to see more meetings like what we've been doing in terms of public safety over at the Charles Black Center, something like Charles Martin Center. I attended some, and sitting at a table with... I attended some and sitting at a table with folks that are, have different experiences, different backgrounds in you, and talking about what should happen in this situation was a very good exercise. And I'll tell you, as I got up from that table, every single person, be they black, brown, white, rich, poor, said, gosh, I don't envy these guys, I would hate to be a police officer. And I think it takes that level of engagement to start healing this divide.
Thank you. We will go now to the next question. We'll hear first this time from the District Four candidates, starting with Tyler Gillian. There were a couple of note cards on this topic. The first says, what will you be looking for in terms of climate, a climate action plan for South Bend? Another person writes, what steps will be taken to protect the earth from global warming? What can we do locally? So are there specific steps you could see taking at a local level to fight global warming or be more environmentally friendly? And that goes first to you, Mr. Combs.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that it starts at the individual, at the individual level. Michael Jackson said, "I've seen some man in the mirror." It's going to start with the man in the mirror. You make that choice, whether you're going to recycle today or not, whether you're going to leave all the lights on in your house or not, whether you're going to turn up the heat all the way up to 80 degrees in the winter time, or you're going to turn the air all the way down into 50 degrees in the summer. I mean, it's kind of, it's called, I think, at the city level. I would love to go ahead and pursue solar. I would love to go ahead and pursue climate. These are all things I would love to do. But at the same time, we're suffering at the end for about 230 days of a 25 days a year, partly to mostly cloudy or totally cloudy. So your solar doesn't really matter. Where, like I said, I would love to pursue that, but at the same time, I think it's going to have to start at the individual level. I would love to have a little bit more programs where we're pushing it out there, especially at schools and the companies in the area. But really, those are, I think, the first steps that we pursued. Because I remember back in the day, I mean, it was recycle, recycle, recycle. And then all of a sudden it stopped. Or we did trash picking, where people were going to the neighbors and picking up trash off the street. Those were active things that we did. And you took ownership of your neighborhood, you took ownership of your street, and you went along with it. And that carried on to you for years all by. Sorry, I know it's a man down the way.
Troy Warner.
Thank you. I think the primary thing the city needs to do dealing with climate change is regarding sewer drainage trade. But the amount of rain that we've seen and things that have come in one time, in one instance, and over the last few years, has been tremendous. My basement, my neighbor's basement flood regularly. There's sewer backups, I think the city needs to get back to the infrastructure. I also, at the county police, we're exploring using hybrids. We've got some coming in. I think the South Bend police also should look at doing hybrids. And then last, as a former electrician, I'd love to see the city install a whole lot more electrical vehicle charging stations and even maybe some incentives regarding electric vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka.
Yes, I've been, as Chair of Utilities Committee, involved in some joint committees, or some joint committee meetings with Health and Public Safety, with Councilwoman Roman surrounding this issue. And I think a couple of important points. I had the privilege of going to Mayor Jeremy Stutman of Ocean's State of the City address this year. And he put it in a more profound way than I'm going to put it. But essentially, we can agree to disagree on the man-made part of climate change, right? And we can still come together on the fact that we need to do what we can to preserve the resources that we have and to make sure that we are moving forward in the future in a sustainable way. And so there's some common sense things that we can do as a city in terms of making sure that any new building is the highest lead certification it can be, in terms of whether it's hybrid vehicle fleets. Those things make financial sense as well. However, I'd like to think that, again, while this is a national interest, you know, I want to focus more on where we have direct responsibility as councilpeople, and that's roads, infrastructure, and public safety.
Mr. Combs.
I agree with the individual perspective that it starts with each and every moment and what we can do, whether it be recycling, whether it be the purchase of a hybrid, and then taking a look at, okay, what does the, what does the city as a whole, what does the city do? And yes, we could have more of the charging stations. We can actually have hybrid fleets. We can have transpo using other sources other than maybe some natural gas or other sources, something that is less polluting.
Thank you. It's time we're going to hear first from District Five, and start with Sandy Combs. It says, almost all of you seem to agree that infrastructure needs improvement and the police force needs to be beefed up, it says in quotation marks. Where is money being wasted that could be invested in these objectives?
I don't know if I could actually pull, I don't want to just pull numbers out of the air, but I think it is something that does need, we do need to take a look at. Where is there money being wasted? I agree with that. I just don't have the answer to that right now. But I would assure you that that would become a first priority once elected to the position.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka.
Yes, so I think there are several areas where we can cut back in the city. And the wheels of city government are not going to stop turning, right? Those are going to have to be discussions that we have community-wide, with a lot of community input and engagement. But we're going to have to start making those tough decisions regardless, right? This year's proposed budget has a deficit of $11.2 million. We can't continually deficit spend and expect to be okay. And not only can we not do that, but we need to increase road funding, as I'm talking about. We need to give that to the basics and make sure we're doing those things right. And that's important. And so where do we find this? I think there's a lot of different places. One of those is, look, this year we were supposed to be on a soft hiring freeze, and this year's budget proposes several new positions and several increases that are over the 2%. I think we need to take a hard look at that and a hard look at staffing levels. And then also look department by department and see where we can maybe tighten our belts a little.
Troy Warner.
Thank you. I, you know, that's all a million dollar question. Is everybody wants to do this and everybody wants to do that? And where do you find the money to do that? And it goes back to what has already been said. And that's, you know, you have to take a hard analysis and a hard look at where the monies are going. I do know there is some long-term, some bonds, some debt obligations that the payments are ending in this coming up year. And that'll free up a little bit of money, but, you know, there's a deficit. And so finding the money to do that, you have to just prioritize and figure out what you should do.
Indeed, the multimillion dollar question. Mr. Gillian.
I love this question because I love looking at things and seeing how we can make things more efficient and cheaper. So, for example, I would probably start off by not just dishing off contracts to companies that actually aren't registered in the states that they are. We just pushed a $250,000 deal to Colette Holt and Associates of Oakland, California. The problem is, Colette Holt and the Oakland, California company that she claims to be a part of actually don't exist, and it was dissolved in 2017. So where did that money go and why? Also, I looked her up in Illinois. She doesn't exist there either. Her company went out of business in 1995. This should have actually been done on the city's watch to begin with. It's unclear, this is from Jeff Perry, whether the Buttigieg administration had been following the board and signed into law by Mayor Steve Lecky requiring the city to track and report minority contracting. So then we spent another $250,000 to hire somebody else to come in to tell us that we should have been doing something that we haven't been doing all along. I mean, that's the type of stuff that I would just relish and give a budget. This, that $250,000 a year that we just spent, we could actually spend in redo Angela that hasn't been redone in 30 years.
Thank you. Speaking of redoing areas, let's turn back to infrastructure, but make it more specific. Are there any specific infrastructure projects you would like to see tackled in your district? And we will hear first from Tyler Gillian.
It seems that we have a ton of them. I think there's most pressing, pressing is going to be down in the choristers where the North Shore Triangle has seen just epic flooding that we had. They had a 500-year flood and 1,000-year flood, where you have people's sewers, river water, all kinds of ways coming up through the racings. I just heard that this weekend, just tons of stories of people living on Angelo Boulevard, where they were like, I, we were told that a lot of these things were to be addressed of the riverine appearance, and nothing has really happened. There hasn't been any actionable movement forward. So, I mean, unfortunately, I feel like as these weather conditions continue to get more and more hectic and we can't get our sewer, it's a problem of infrastructure under control, these things are going to continue to persist. And I really feel like that that has to be most pressing. Is that the one that we want to address first? It's not the sexiest topics, topic to talk about. We love to improve street space and make everything look beautiful. But I think that we have to really tighten our belts and really discipline ourselves and attack the projects that need our attention first, and that would be one of them.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I think I've already said and spoken on the sewer and water drainage. I think that needs to be a priority. I also think part of the ways to address public safety is by using infrastructure. Public safety is more than just policing. It's having well-lit and safe streets. That's, so you increase lighting, you improve the quality of your sidewalks. And that's a way that you can also improve safety within the neighborhoods. And then streets, you know, we have to deal with streets and somehow figure a way to do a better job than we've been doing thus far and replace any more of the streets a little quicker.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka, any projects that you would like to see tackled in the Fifth District?
I've got a whole list, actually. And there's a whole list of streets that I've got that need paving and keep on Public Works about those all the time. I'm happy to see that we have some temporary patches over the bypass on Ironwood on the south side. That was a ball joint buster. And in terms of drainage, we've got plenty of those issues as well. I've got an entire subdivision, the Hidden Creek subdivision, that when we get a heavy rain, these folks cannot get in and out of their neighborhood. There's literally no way for them to pass through the water and there's no back ends of the, and one of these couples that I talked to on a regular basis about this issue, they have a daughter that has some urgent medical needs. And if there were to be rain and the daughter were to be stuck in the house, we would be in a really tough situation. And we haven't been able to find solutions. Something going on for a very long time. And I've been talking to Public Works over the last year and a half about it. And we've just got to get it done.
Thank you. Sandy Combs.
I think we can all agree that the other, the roads and the roads, sewers, things of that nature, that those are all out there, that those are very critical. I hear more about the potholes in the streets. But also, you know, when you look at the infrastructure, I also like to also look at the water supply. One of the things that I've heard a lot about too is that we need to do something about the drinking water in the city of South Bend. That if we're going to, actually, if we're going to attract new businesses and people coming to South Bend, it's almost like, yeah, you can tell yourself, Ben, don't drink the water. And it's not that the water's not safe, it's just that the water just tastes, it's hard water and it tastes terrible.
Thank you. His next question will go back to you again, Mr. Combs. And it says, would you consider paying home rehabbers or landlords a tax incentive to rehab older homes in our inner city and provide decent housing and rentals? We used to have the Dollar House Program. Why not make it available for good rehabbers?
Yes, I would. I would agree with that. I think that I look at the, you know, we went through a program a few years ago of the turning down 1,000 homes in 1,000 days, when we could have basically, some of those could have been saved. And, you know, and with the, a lot of the properties in South Bend are rental properties. So the landlords, if given the opportunity, and I think most landlords are good landlords, they want to keep their properties up. And so I think that it would be, it would be, it would be helpful if, for the, for the properties in South Bend, if, yes, if there were some sort of incentives given to, given to landlords to basically to help to rehab and help to save some of the housing units in the city.
Mr. Tashka.
Certainly, urban infill is something that we need to focus on in both the existing structures and the existing lots at this point. It came up in last month's mayor over the debate, right? Not everybody can afford a $1,200 to $2,000 a month apartment downtown. So what are we going to do to increase the affordable housing? And so I think when all the properties are sitting on the tax rolls, there's no hope of anybody planning them, no hope of anybody doing anything, purchasing them. We should incentivize some, in some way, something to happen with that property, even if it's just for giving back taxes and, as you said, transferring the title, whatever that may be. I'm working with a pair of smaller developers. I think we need to do that. Local developers on a smaller scale. We hear a lot about the Bradley Coes and the Holliday's and those types of developers. We need to work with some of the smaller developers. I had a meeting just earlier this week with Community Investment, and they want to put some urban infill housing in the Fifth District. And we need to work with them and make sure that we're providing them with every resource that they need to get this job done.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I think I would have to take a valuation and look at exactly what the credit would be and, you know, what would be the cost and what would be the benefit in evaluating your investment. In addition to that, it would be who would qualify and how would they qualify? There's some good landlords in South Bend. There's also, I've sued a few slow lords. We've got more than our share of those. So you've got to look at, you know, your return on investment. Community Investment has gotten some large grants the last couple of years. They've had some great programs that Alkina Orange is working on, even where they are bringing in training and training homeowners to repair and remodel and fix up, and then using the grant money to buy supplies and helping people, you know, instead of fixing it for them, you're teaching them how to fix their own home and putting on workshops and things within neighborhoods to do that. So I think those are also options that we could look at to help folks out.
Thank you. And Mr. Gillian.
Yeah, I mean, I would say tentatively, yes. I don't think this is going to be a broad approach here. I want to make sure that these are local landlords, right? That we're not going to get one from Florida, Arizona, California, New York, that are buying these properties and just letting them become fully dilapidated. And where are they doing with the money? I also want to know is that, what's the timeframe on this? Do we hold them? These people, like after 90 days and they have started insurance, you're fully permitted? Do we then take back the house? Those are things I think, I'm very concerned with. What's the impact on the area? What's the goal? What's the long-term plan? I also think that we can't really decide that current city council unless we consult people in the neighborhood groups. Like I'm glad that Mary Money made an argument tonight at the Howard Park Neighborhood Association, where they said that they had their own visions as to what the Howard Park area would be. I wouldn't make one single decision unless I can, in that area, unless I consulted them first. I know that they wanted a little bit more urban infill. They got a project that they didn't necessarily love. But they're going to go ahead and adapt to it because we have a great new Howard Park skating rink coming in there. But at the same time, I think urban infill is needed. Cities naturally are urban. People are living in clusters. We live together, you're more familiar with one another, and there's less chances of that happening as you look out for your neighborhood.
Thank you. We will now turn to the next question, and we will hear first from the District Four candidates. We'll start back with you, Tyler Gillian. And the question is this. Some people have criticized the current administration and the council for focusing too much investment in downtown South Bend, while others have argued it was necessary to attract private partnerships and to develop pride in the city. Which comes closer to your view?
I would have to say that I was both, right? When it first started, I mean, downtown to me, the only, the first time I'd ever been in downtown, I think I was 17 years old and I went to Buffalo Wild Wings, and that was one time. I didn't go back until after college, really. So I think that establishing who we are, the core of the city, was an important task. At the same point in time, I see that we continue to pour more and more resources in it, which I think is fair. But at the same time, there's wonderful places like Miami Village, right? Mission Waka Avenue corridor over here, that's beautiful. It's one of the few areas in town that is still in its original state, hasn't been torn down through urban renewal. I really think that we need to go ahead and reemphasize the neighborhood group. Yes, the downtown is for everybody, but at the same time, people lack their cultural identity, like they've done over in the Howard Park-Jefferson Boulevard corridor where we live, where East Bank Village, it's fantastic. But I think an emphasis is going to be put back onto the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I, I know Karen White and Joe Roman posted neighborhood meetings. I went to a couple of those neighborhood meetings in which they reached out. They got input from the neighborhoods on what they would like to see. This current budget has, according to Karen White, it's the largest increase in neighborhood funding in 30 years in this current budget. I think the city and the administration kind of listened and has made a shift and a pivot towards the neighborhoods. We'll see, you know, our budget for next year is already decided. We won't be able to deal with that, but we can look at the budget next year, evaluate that and see, maybe even putting more money into the neighborhoods, the parks, and the neighborhoods. the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka.
So the budget's not decided yet. Come on, say it, mind your own, and if you've got something to say on the budget, you can say it then. And I would like to say that, you know, it's hard to say, well, yeah, I'm both, but in the beginning, right, you need to invest in your downtown. If your downtown is the heart of the city, most likely the heart of your body, pumping blood throughout, you need to have a healthy downtown. But if we're doing that at the expense of the neighborhoods, right, if we're investing in the downtown and taking resources from the neighborhood to do that or not resourcing the neighborhoods properly in order to do that, then that becomes a problem. And now our downtown is thriving and I think it is time to shift our attention to neighborhoods to some of the other corridors in my district, either Miami corridor, South Michigan Street corridor, and really help revitalize those areas as well.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
Yes, it is kind of hard to say both, but yes, I, the end result is I like what I see here in downtown. It's, you need to revitalize the downtown, but at the same time, there are just about every other neighborhood in the city also needs to be revitalized as well. And I look at the Fifth District and it's indicated that is, the Fifth District is the gateway to the city from when you're approaching South Bend from the, from the south or even from the, from the east. And so therefore, you know, to actually to be able to further develop and enhance those, those business districts down there, that is very much needed. And I'm sure there are other areas of the, there are many areas throughout the city. So I think not only do you look at downtown, but you've got to look at all of your neighborhoods. And there has to be, you know, there has to be some fairness and equality. You can't just do it with downtown on one side of the city. You've got to look at every neighborhood and every side of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Combs, his next question goes first to you and it says, "What are one or two things the council, working with the mayor, could do to attract new businesses or grow current businesses in the city of South Bend?"
And I think that there again is to take a look at your infrastructure and to take a look, look at public safety and to look at education within the city of South Bend. That as we attract new businesses and new families to South Bend, we've got to be able to at least have a job-ready workforce, which means that we need to partnership with the school corporation and to actually get more vocational and technical education programs going on in the schools. Because not everybody is going to be, not everybody's going to go to college and not everybody needs to be, you know, have all of the debt that it takes to go to college. We need to have, we can have a, an appeal to outside businesses coming in by having a well-trained labor force.
Jake Tashka.
So, infrastructure's definitely a piece of it, right? Amazon decides to move to the northwest side of town, but the infrastructure there can't really handle all of, all that's going on in that Portage Prairie area right now. And so we need to make sure that we're keeping up with that. And so we need to do that in many ways. I think we can do it on a TIF. And now we're at a point where a lot of the businesses downtown are rooting and thriving and so we can use a lot more of those TIF dollars towards infrastructure instead of, towards incentivizing projects. I think schools are definitely a piece of it, not just the vocational education part, but the reputation that our schools have. Look, businesses want to go where people want to be, right? They want their workforces to be there. And until we get our schools right, we're not going to be able to have folks wanting and clamoring to move into the city. Again, as council, we have, we have little say over that, but we need to start engaging better with the school corporation to do that and try and ask for yours.
Thank you. Mr. Warner, your ideas for attracting businesses or growing current businesses within the city limits?
Thank you. I think one of the things we've seen on the west side, which has been really successful is the facade grants that were put in place. A number of those businesses along western were able to use those facade grants to fix up their buildings and they put in great restaurants. I love the taco and the ice cream out there on Western Avenue and both of those businesses got facade grants. I also think community investment needs to start paying more attention to the small businesses. I've been to a local zoning meeting and there was a very large business coming into town and community investment was there to speak on behalf of the large business. And then we had four small, kind of, one was, they were all west side businesses in lower-income neighborhoods that were also seeking zoning and community investment left and kind of left those small businesses to fend for themselves against the zoning board and I was rather shocked by it. And then last, I think we also need to ensure training. It goes back to partnership with the schools to ensure that our kids are coming up with skills that allow them to be hired by local companies without them bringing in other kind of people to do the jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Gillian.
I know a lot of people in America, Jake, I know this has been a big hot button issue for us. I mean, we really sit at a crossroads, not literally or metaphorically, but literally. We sit with instead of one day drive of 70% of the American population. We don't have the cost of living that you have and the challenges inside of Cleveland, Detroit, Chicago. We have so many different things that are available to us. I think that our first, one of our first priorities is obviously making sure we can be safety to death and we also hit on schools. And we have to make sure that we have top-notch infrastructure because if we don't have the roads and railroads that are in place for these companies to create, which is what manufacturing is or shipping is or bringing logistics up, if we don't have these things in place, they are not going to come here. I mean, that's where we have to go ahead and reprioritize our budgets to address these things. We have to bring the school board to the table and we have to go ahead and get our public safety energy control because businesses want to go where people go. And that's why people are flocking to Austin, Texas and Nashville and Denver, Colorado. People want to be there, so the businesses will follow. So, I mean, realistically, I know we have a couple of departments dedicated to community investment redevelopment, economic empowerment, chief innovation. How much do they know of the jobs that they're working out? It's waiting very long for one group, sorry.
Thank you. He's apologizing, but he was like a second and a half over. Okay, so Tyler, this question will go to you first. It's our final question and it says, "Is there one thing we haven't discussed this evening that you think voters should be thinking about when they cast their ballots on November 5th or before November 5th?"
Is there one thing that the voters should, that we haven't talked about? I really think that we've hit the three hot button issues. I mean, I've gone to hundreds of doors with my campaign manager and grandmother there and it's really the same thing, right? You know, we came, we came about about the ideas that we represented and it came all the way back to crime and infrastructure and then to the schools. I really think that those are enough to be able to keep us fed for now. A lot of the different issues, we can go ahead and take them apart one by one, but I really think we have to really prioritize when it comes to crime, infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I've talked to some of the council members and the biggest part of their job is constituent services, right? They serve people, they solve problems, they direct them, they listen to them and direct them to the, excuse me, the department or the agency or they can help them with the problem that they have. I think, you know, that's what the voters are looking for and that's what the voters are thinking about or should be thinking about is constituent services and helping the voters.
Thank you. And Mr. Tashka.
It's tough to follow those, those are all actually really key and constituent services is a key point of mine, but if we're talking about things that we haven't already touched on tonight, I'd say making sure the balance of power in our city is right. And what I mean by that is that I believe the council has over the years, knowing they are an organization, aggravated some of its powers. Most people don't know that the council has subpoena powers, that we have a lot of power with the budget, right? We are supposed to be a co-equal branch of government, not just a body to represent whatever the administration wants. Agree or disagree with the administration, right? We need to critically look at everything. We need to have the backbone to stand up and to say, hey, this is not right, how do we move forward? And I think in order to do that, you need to have a councilperson that has the energy and enthusiasm for the city and I think I'm not yet.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
I think all, you know, we've got, we've listened to a lot here tonight and the things that, we've got the three things that we specifically need to look at and I guess if we look hard enough, search hard enough, we could find one other thing, but I think it's most important that we focus on those three areas and get some, some things done concretely in those areas. And I'm sure that out of those will come even other things that we could need to address. But right now, I'm saying let's, let's, we've got some issues, some challenges, let's work on those challenges.
Thank you very much. We are now at the time for a closing statement. Before each candidate has 30 seconds to tell us why they deserve our vote on election day, but I want to remind you that you can go to vote411.org. There you can see who's on your ballot, you can find your polling place, you can learn about upcoming forums and debates, and you can also read responses by these candidates that address not only issues we've talked about tonight, but other questions as well. So vote411.org and we would encourage you to check that out. And now we will move to closing statements and we will go in the order in the program and we will start with Tyler Gillian from District Four.
Thank you very much. I mean, I would encourage you, I know we have 30 seconds to go to tonygillian.com if you want to see where I stand on more and more of the issues, but I really think it's time for a new era in South Bend politics, a fresh face, not the same rotor tilt that goes around where it's the same, or some of the same ideas. We're going to need something new. I mean, this is a new century and we're about to approach a new decade. I think it's time for new leadership. So I know you may not agree with the party that I stand for, but if you heard some of the things here tonight, you think you could jump in, I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Warner.
Thank you. If I am elected, I will answer your phone call. I will reply to your email. I will come to your kitchen table and listen to your problems and solve, and help you solve your problems. I only make one promise to the voters and that is that I will do my best and I will work hard for all of our community with truth, integrity and compassion. I ask you for your vote on November 5th. Troy Warner for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our District Five candidates, starting with Sandy Combs.
I like the opportunity to be able to serve the Fifth District in the city of South Bend. I've got the leadership skills to do it. I will also, I will be responsive to the taxpayers, to the people, that anytime that you've got an issue, you can come to me and I will, I will give you, I will get back to you and give you a response. I'm just, I think that I have a lot to offer to the city of South Bend. I've served in a lot of volunteer. Now I'd like to serve in elected positions. I'm asking you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jake Tashka.
Thank you, Professor Brandon. Thank you all for being here tonight. We've covered a lot of ground in the last hour and a half and I could talk for several more hours. This is my passion. This is what I love to do. I like to say that I do my day job just so that I can get to this because this is, this is what gets my heart pumping. And I believe this election will come down to just a few key issues. Those are the issues I've been touched on tonight, right? Public safety and infrastructure, the issues that people have been begging the city officials to, to address for years. And so if the good people of this district hire me for a full four-year term, I will do everything in my power to fight for those true priorities and to be a stronger voice in favor for South Siders.
Thank you very much. Let's have a round of applause for all of you. We invite those who are here with us live rather than watching on Facebook Live to join us for some refreshments and informal chat time with the candidates. We also invite you to come back for the At-Large Candidate Forum, which will be in this same location on October 15th at 6:00 p.m. And to go to the American Democracy Project or Lea Women Voters website to see footage of past forums. Footage of this forum will also be available there for those who are unable to join us in person but want to watch this forum before casting their ballots. Thank you all for being here. Good night.